Oh, yeah, Ken's online.
All right, let's call to order the October 28th Littsboro Council meeting. Mayor?
I do not see anyone from the ministerium out there, so if you would, let's have a moment of silence. Amen. Uh, can we rise for the pledge?
Thank you, Mayor, and I would like to note that Councilman Ken Mobley is on virtually. You there, Ken?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, we got you, bud. All right, the first thing on the agenda is the approval of the September meeting minutes.
I'd like to, um, uh, make an amend or a correction to the minutes. Um, there is a line under the sewer. Now here.
The water sewer report?
Water sewer, um, presentation that Rob gave that refers to the, um, lead mains being replaced, and that should read lead service lines in the minutes. And with that correction, I would offer um, a, a motion to accept.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, motion approved. Thank you, Mary. Um, and to back up here. All right, we have two presentations tonight. Uh, first on the agenda is the Wise Gas and Go. Guessing the gang in the front here, because I don't recognize any.
And I'm sorry to interrupt you. We will need you to speak to the microphone if you don't mind. Thank you.
Yeah, if anybody gets up to speak, just because we've got a number of folks.
Again, Joe Gurney, First Capital Engineering, um, the Director of Land Development there. Uh, with me here tonight is Alex Arorbia of Wise Markets, Rob Davis of First Capital, Professional Engineer, and John Luciani of First Capital Professional Engineer. Um, briefly, just go over the project real quick. Um, Wise Markets is proposing the construction of a gas and go facility at their seven, at their, at the store at 740 South Broad Street. That, uh, gas and go facility has a 204 square, square foot kiosk, six fueling positions, canopy, air station, and underground storage tanks. Uh, Wise Markets property is 5.092 acres in size. Um, a portion of it, as you know, is split between the township and the borough. Um, the gas and go is entirely within Warwick Township. Um, existing parking is 245 spaces. Based on the process that we've gone through since last October, we are proposing, uh, a change to 222 spaces. We're introducing additional landscape islands within the main parking facility. That's the majority of the reduction in parking, along with the gas and go is, um, displacing a number of spaces. Um, we're reducing impervious coverage by a little over a percent. Um, we're proposing ADA, uh, crosswalks and ADA accessible crosswalks across Highland Drive and across Seventh Street. Um, and there are multitude of landscaping improvements, enhancements along all those street frontages and as well as the landscape islands within the proposed far parking facility. Additional landscape islands are being proposed. I believe off the top of my head, it's about 12, 13, so each one of those will have, uh, shade, uh, uh, shade trees. Um, just to give a little bit of history, not to go all the way back to when we started, but back in, um, September, we met with Borough Staff, uh, Borough Engineer David Miller Associates and Grove Miller Associates, uh, to discuss the project. Um, on October 7th, we made a compliance submission addressing the Borough's comments, David Miller's comments, and Grove Miller's comments as well. And, uh, we were in receipt of comments from all three of those folks. Uh, in the last, I don't want to give the dates, Grove Miller on the 14th, which was a, a approval letter. There were no additional comments. Uh, David Miller's, uh, comments that we received were the 17th of October. There were a couple of minor issues and additions to the plan that need to happen. And the Borough comments or Borough memo was, uh, 1020. Um, most of those were, had to do with the waivers and the modifications we're requesting. Um, as part of, um, and looking at those three letters, we, uh, have reviewed them and deemed that we're acceptable, they're acceptable to us, and we'd like to move forward with approvals of the waivers and approval of the land development plan here tonight. So, I'll sit down.
Rob, if you could scroll, just so all of council can see if you guys haven't viewed the plans. Um, keep going to with the proposed plan. To the point that Joe brought up first, I just want everybody to understand how much is in the township and the borough. That, oop, go back one. Right there. Zoom in on that a little bit, if you can, without. So that, that big fat line there is, so everything to the left of it's the township. The right of it's the borough. The point is, I'd say the gas pumps itself is in the township, but as with any kind of land development, once you open Pandora's box, you gotta look at everything. So, that's where, uh, the unfortunate thing for an applicant, but fortunately, that's the way things go. So they, Mary, you'll appreciate this, I know, is they, the compliance with, uh, the islands, the planting islands and the shady trees, which takes away that, I hate to say, is the sea of parking. That was the intention of doing that within our ordinance years ago. It eliminates a lot of that out front, so it does improve a lot of the, the front of the Wise, uh, along with, um, once they said, "Open Pandora's box for this development on that side." I hate to say that. Yes. Unfortunately, I've been on your side of it and had to go through things like that before, so. I, I'm, I'm happy to see the, the additional improvements that that creates to the entire, um, location. I don't have anything specific questions. I've read through everything. I've looked over the plans. Council, anyone have any specific question for the applicant?
I just want to confirm, so where the whole, off to the left, there, is there gonna be any parking spaces at all?
Yeah.
On the left?
Yeah, zoom out a little.
It's hard to.
Correct. I can go up there and point if you like, just because it's kind of, you won't be able to see it, may I?
Sure.
Yeah, if Rob zooms in there, you.
Need full space with this place, parking, 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 got there right now?
I shop there, so I know exactly what you mean. Okay. Okay. And that too? Okay.
Just the center.
Just the center sign.
Goes away.
Okay, thank you. I also am happy about that because I shop there, and I would love to be able to get gas there, so.
Any other questions from council?
I have a question about the, um, the basin. Um, that's gonna be replanted. I see that you have some good plantings in there. It's gonna be improved, it looks. Um, and.
Yeah, LDO's, page nine of 18.
Yep, page nine of 18.
Right there are there's soil below the, this. Under loving plants, there's problems.
Mm-hmm.
For the, for that base, Bob.
Okay. Yeah, and there's a maintenance plan that's been reviewed by our engineer?
There's an existing operations and maintenance plan that existed when we did the expansion back in 910. And one of the comments is the O and M agreement. So, um, our intent is to update that existing O and M agreement.
Okay, and, uh, there will be annual submissions of compliance with your BMP inspections?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Um, that's one of those things that's in Pandora's box. Um, we all understand how that can happen. Um, I, I think, um, the one thing that I do want to comment on, because I was at the Planning Commission meeting when the issue came up about the park and ride facilities. And I think we, um, came up with a good solution for how you address that there, and, um, I do know a number of people use the, the bus stop there, and there will be some parking designated, I believe, for that in the future. Um, so I, I think.
Correct, the plan indicates for, um, parking spaces for the bus stop.
Great. And the, will there be signage there? Okay. Okay. Um, I don't think I have anything else.
Anyone else? No, I, I think it's, it's definitely an improvement here. Hence that area.
Are there any outstanding issues with Shade Tree Commission that they need to comment on?
No, all, all the Shade Tree comments were addressed early on.
Okay, thank you.
All right, with that, I'd be looking for a motion from someone.
I would like to make a motion to approve the modification, modification request for the Wise Gas and Go. Detailed, um, in Elijah Yurick's memo to council dated October 20th. These include modifications to SLD 0305, 402 C3, 403 EC, E3C, and 405D, 602 A7, 603 A2, 603 A3, and 20107, 603B, 1713A7, 713A7G, 713A3F, and 713A8C, 713A4A, 713A5D, and 713A9C.
A mouthful. Second.
All right, we have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion approved.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Welcome.
Thank you, Christine.
That, that, the preliminary plan submission, that was, that was the first one, 305.
It's, it's, it's the whole, I know, I think you'd start by saying modification.
Okay, start, yeah, request, yep.
Thanks, Senator.
Thank you.
No worry.
All right, uh, second presentation, the Littit's Library Expansion.
Okay, so I'm Carolyn Rice, Director of the Littit's Public Library. Thank you guys so much for giving me a chance to talk today. Um, our very first slide here, um, the library is very much never have to turn it up at all. This is exciting for me. Um, the library is a community. So on this, this front slide here, I just have a picture of our community. So I have, um, our two storytime coordinators. They're setting up one of the, um, story walks outside the library, um, so that we have a book accessible 24/7, even when the library's closed. And then we have a multi-generational group, um, staying healthy and doing a yoga program at, at the library. Um, so the Littit's Public Library is a non-profit, nonprofit public library with a service area of over 32,000 people. Elijah, not yet. Oh, sorry. Sorry. I forgot, I forgot it is, yeah. I'm sorry, you're doing great, Elijah.
Thank you.
You're doing great, too. Um, yeah, including residents of Littit's Borough, um, Elizabeth Township and Warwick Township. Um, we have been serving this community for 90 years. Mary, now you're gonna make me laugh. Um, since, since the lesion and, um, the Rotary Club started loaning books out of an hardware bu- building. Okay, ready, Rob? Okay, so our mission is, um, to provide access to books, materials, and databases, and an environment that supports personal enrichment and community engagement. Um, so essentially, what that means is we are working to enhance and enrich the lives of our community. Um, and that's not just within our walls. Um, one of the members of the hub had reached out to us, um, needing help. Um, so we have a couple of staff members, um, who went out, they're rolling napkins for the community Thanksgiving meal. So we, um, you know, if there's a call for help, even if it's not book, library-related, um, we want to be there and help the community. Okay. Um, okay, so 5,476 residents, um, currently have an active library card, uh, meaning that they have used it in the last three years. Um, those residents borrowed almost nine, uh, 90,000 items from the library in 2024, and that circulation rate per capita is 9.2. So checking out those library materials rather than purchasing them have saved residents just under $2 million. Um, it's valuable, obviously, to adults, people in this room. Um, it, it's also essential for parents and caregivers. Um, the library has a 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten program. It's an early literacy program. Um, the library is part of the Department of Education, um, and so we are trying to help children prepare for formal schooling. Um, if you assume that a parent reads a new book to their child every day from birth to kindergarten, the cost of those books could be about, uh, $33,000. Um, so the library just trying to makes that journey possible and accessible for all of our community members. Excuse me. Um, so we currently have over 66,000 physical items in our collection right now. We have over 28,000, excuse me, digital items. And then, um, that's about 1,000 items more than we had at the time of my presentation last year. Um, so continuing to, um, also see a skyrocketing demand for those eBooks and e-audio books. Um, so we're continuing to add those to our collections. Um, I think I had shared previously, just a reminder about how the pricing model works for those types of materials, um, where, you know, with a physical book, you can pretty much just keep checking it out again and again, till it pretty much falls apart, um, although we have really great tapers, um, at the library. Um, with E, uh, E or E audio materials, um, you can purchase it once. It's pretty much a one-year loan. Um, costs is between 60, uh, to $150, um, and then it goes back at the end of that time. So, um, it's something, obviously, that is important to our community, so we're continuing to, um, add those to the collection. It's just a different, uh, pricing model to navigate for us. Um, sorry, I don't have my, my glasses, so what's the next thing? Um, so our library also hosts more children to our children's programming than any other library in the entire county, including the, um, one in this city. Um, and our families obviously love them. Um, in the past year alone, we offered 686 children's programs, which includes 17 storytimes a week, um, and we saw 14,851 attendees to those programs. Um, one-fifth of our staff, um, have a master's degree in library and information science, which we're very proud of. Obviously, um, the staff are the heart of the library. Um, you know, they're providing reference services, they're providing readers advisory services, um, technology assistance. Um, and those things are all in very much high demand, and our staff work very hard, um, to provide those. Ready, Rob? Um, so last year, we had 1,007 programs with over 21,000 participants. We had 1,665 kids and teens participate in our summer reading program, which is great. It's our largest number ever. Um, we also had Go Lancaster, which is a partnership with Wellspan Health to help kids, um, encourage kids to get outside and go to their local parks. Um, we had 450, uh, children complete that, and we also hold, um, our very popular concert series, which she's about 100 to 125 adults um, every month come out and just enjoy some music. Um, and then it's very important to us, um, as a community hub, to, um, be a location where our local groups can come and meet. So we have the Astronomy Club, we have the Historical Society come out, um, the Jane Austen Society. Um, it's really important that we feel like we can be a space where they can hold their meetings as well. And this is just a reminder that libraries are more than just books. Um, so you can see some of the different items we have available for the library. Um, this summer, we just added, um, two of these. They are, uh, non-verbal communication devices, so it's a precursor to, um, the augmented, augmentative and alternative, um, communication devices, which, um, if you've ever seen, it's usually, um, a wheelchair user. It'll have like kind of an iPad type situation. Um, and this is just a little precursor to that, just allowing them to test out the technology, see if that will work for their families before they go ahead and make such an expensive purchase. Um, it's especially helpful for families, um, with autism, adults recovering from dementia, someone who's suffered a stroke, um, things like that, and it just, it, I'll pass it around, but, um, it just helps them be able to communicate if, if verbally, it's kind of difficult for them. Um, and we also added, um, this year, we added Yodo players, which are like little cubes. Um, you can stick a card in it, and it'll read them stories, sing them songs, um, other educational content. So those have been also very popular, and without a screen. Next. Um, this is just a little bit about our finances. So 58% of the library's budget is generated by the library. Um, it includes our book sales, includes any of the big events that our friends put on for us. Um, tomorrow, they're going out to, um, a bus trip to the, um, Brandywine Conservancy. Um, they do the jewelry sale. They do an amazing job of, of raising funds for us. We're very grateful for them. Um, we also have several endowments, um, most recently, one of which was used to, um, to assist in building the upper parking lot in 2023. Um, that, funds for that account have now appreciated back to their formal level, so, um, we are, we're doing good on, on the financial front, um, making sure we're taking care of our investments. Um, and this is an idea of what our funding is compared to national averages at the county, state, and federal level. Um, so you can see in most states, um, libraries are funded by the county. Um, we were lucky to have received an increase in state funding a couple of years ago. It is still 12% lower than what it had been in 2008, 2009, so, um, just kind of navigating, navigating that kind of situation. Um, we're very grateful. This community is, is very generous to us. Um, I do also want to thank, um, Borough Council at this time, um, for your donations and your support, um, of the library of $6, um, per capita. Um, I do also know that some of you personally are library donors, so again, just wanted to make sure I thank all of you at this time. Okay, and last time I was here, we did talk about the potential to, um, to grow the library, so, um, just wanted to share a little bit about that. So, uh, we, um, are working with the township. We, we will be, um, submitting our second version of our, um, land development plan to the township tomorrow. Um, so hopefully, we'll be hearing the results of that after their November meeting. Um, but I just wanted to share a couple, um, details about what our plan, um, for that growth would look like. So, um, since the library building opened in 1999, um, the population of the service area has increased by 4,357 pers-, uh, people, which is 17%. Um, but the library's physical footprint, obviously, has not grown at all. So, um, at the same time, um, engagement at the library has really increased, um, which just further amplifies our need for space. We had an increase of 148% in the number of people visiting the library, uh, 45% in the number of circulations of our materials, and, um, a program attendance has risen 295%. So this growth, obviously, is a testament to, um, the high quality of programming and services that the library offers, but it's also, um, really unders- underscores a need, um, pressing need for expansion. Um, wait lists. Um, so I talked about how many programs we have. Um, yet despite that, because of our, um, space limitations, we do have many wait lists. We have wait lists for our concerts, um, but also, uh, most pressingly and severely, um, for our children's program and our storytimes. Um, again, even despite having, uh, 17 storytimes a week, we still have a lot of families, um, who cannot make it on the list. Um, in 2024, we had to waitlist 367 children, um, for our programming. Many of those are homeschool families where the library is really the only resource, um, they have for, for programs and, and, um, uh, learning, um, engagement, and things like that. So, um, excuse me, so, um, that's really just something that we, that we would really like to take care of, um, and mitigate some of that with this expansion. Um, just a brief look at some of the spaces, um, that we're looking at. Um, expanding meeting spaces, kind of redoing, um, or updating our teen and young adult area, having, uh, private tutoring areas, um, enhancing, um, our children's programming spaces, um, providing more ADA compliance, and then some of the infrastructure updates, um, you know, where we have, uh, roof that has, needs to be replaced and things like that. Okay? Um, and this, um, is our floor plan that we're looking at. Um, Chief, do you mind being my, um, pointer finger? Okay, thank you. Um, the, the top left, yes, um, that's going to be a children's. That's going to be a children's programming space. Um, so right now, um, the bottom right, yes, um, is the only space that we have for programming, so we have all of our adult programs are in there. Um, all of our, most of our children's programs are in there, um, and, uh, the community groups come in and use that space. So everyone's kind of fighting over that space, um, or just not able to do as much as we want. So that children's programming, um, up in that corner there, um, will be, obviously, just for our children. We'll be able to increase the number of attendees we can have to things like storytime, um, and our just general children's programs. Um, then in the top right, there's two little, yep. Um, so those are two, um, like three to four people, uh, rooms where we can have, um, tutoring can come in there, um, adults who come in with a computer need to zoom or something like that, um, can use that space. Um, we just don't really have a quiet space right now for those kinds of things. Um, so we, and we get a lot of questions for them. Um, we also have people, um, there's an adult, uh, learner, an adult male learner who, um, is learning to read for the very first time. Um, and that's something that, you know, maybe you might want a private space for something that, like that, rather than being, um, just in the center of the library. So that's really what that space is for. Um, then there is, there's like two little bump outs in the bottom. Yes. Um, so one of those, um, is just gonna be an office. That's just to, um, alleviate some of the, um, space issues for our staff area, um, you know, where we're doing checkouts and check, and, uh, um, processing books and things like that. And then the other bump out is going to be, um, another like smaller meeting room, eight to 10 people. Um, you know, small businesses could come use that space. Um, you know, a staff could come to have a little staff meeting or something in there if they don't have, um, the space for that. So, um, so that, we'd like to open up that area to the community. So we would have, um, two spaces that have three to four people. Um, that space would have an eight to 10. Uh, we have a conference room that has about 25 people can fit in there, and then we have the 100, uh, people's space that can fit in the original community room, and then as well as the children's programming room. So really be able to, um, open up, um, the library. And then last thing, Chief, thank you so much. Um, like just the entire left-hand side is, um, we are gonna be switching, um, the space, um, between our children's and our young adult spaces. Um, we got a lot of feedback. We do a patron survey at the beginning of the year. A lot of feedback for parents, um, asking for, um, you know, a, a space where middle, middle grade or high schoolers could come and hang out and use that space. Um, and we didn't really have a, you know, a place where they could feel super comfortable, so that's the plan to kind of make that a little more, um, teen, you know, middle school friendly is the plan for that space. Um, and then again, um, there's things like ADA, um, right now, our backyard, we have backyard storytimes. Um, we can see 150 people in our backyard, um, and there's really no easy access way, um, to the backyard. Um, so we are gonna be grading some of the ground, um, so that there's an access point from the new programming space. Um, it'll be graded, um, so that there'll be access from the back patio, um, and then there'll be, um, a sidewalk that comes around from the parking lot. So we, we have a lot of, um, strollers, we, you know, the Littit Stroller Gang, you might be familiar with. We see them all the time coming by. There's almost 100 people in that group. Um, and, you know, you, trying to get the stroller through the grass. Um, you know, grandparents who bring grandchildren to those programs, just, it's just gonna make things a lot more accessible for them. Um, the, the first thing that we have actually completed is, um, replacing the front doors. Um, we had 26 years of, the front doors. We had 26 years of people banging on those buttons, which is great. We love kids being so excited to come to the library, but the doors did not always work. So despite my now excellent skill at repairing doors, we have replaced them. So I no longer have to. And just the doors are are now accessible all the time. So, so that's the plan. There's a couple of storage and things like that, paint. But that's the gist of the plan. The campaign itself is a $1.5 million campaign. We did just have on October 5th, we had our kickoff to the public. Prior to that, we had been working with some of our closest donors and supporters on the campaign. We were able to announce that on October 5th, we were at 1.5 million of the 1.1 million of the 1.5. And as of today, I can also announce that we are at 1.3. So, so really, so much community support has over this project. So we're very excited about that. And we do anticipate approval at the municipal level, but also like to ask for your support, both financially and as advocates. We believe that a gift from Lititz Borough toward the building fund would inspire others to do the same. Your leadership will signal to residents, businesses, and foundations that this project has strong community backing, ensuring that the library can grow along with the people that it serves. Next. And that's everything I have. Again, we're just so grateful for the ongoing support from the borough, and I'd love to answer any questions that you have. And sorry for being out of breath five months.
Yeah. What's the timing? Obviously, once you get your approvals, it sounds like soon and then hit your final 100,000.
Yeah. So we are, we're hoping to get the approvals on November 22nd. And then we believe that will still help us do an early spring 2026 kickoff or a groundbreaking is the plan.
Anybody have any questions?
Carolyn, I heard a really sweet story at your board meeting about a young man who came up and pulled a couple of dollar bills and some change out of his pocket.
Yeah, really sweet. We had a cup, two children, you know, during the kickoff. It was a very family oriented event. And we had two, two little kids come up and took out like whatever allowance they had from their pocket, you know, crumpled up and wanted to donate that to the library. So just really heartwarming that even, you know, a little child realizes how important the library is.
Well, I have my donation card sitting on my counter at home, and you'll be getting it soon.
Thanks, Mary.
And thank you for everything you all do at the library. It's really amazing to see the statistics of how many people you serve and the value of it in the community.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Carolyn, just a question. You said you're looking for a gift from the Borough or the Capitol campaign. Is that in addition to the contribution that the Borough?
Yes.
In lieu to the operation for the Borough?
Yes. Yeah, we, we would still appreciate the support. We still do need to continue our regular operations. So yes, it would be in addition, would be the request.
We can't make any decision on that tonight.
That's okay.
We do, we do have our budget review meeting coming up. First one with the full council will be in November, mid-November. So we'll add that, that request.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And welcome to come to that meeting.
Okay.
It'll be published, I believe, November 10th is the date.
It's going to be November 12th.
Number 12, excuse me.
Typically, it's on the Tuesday, and that's Veterans Day.
That's Veterans Day. Okay. Wednesday, the 12th.
November the 12th.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your wonderful presentation. Still, it just boggles my mind every time you talk about the eBooks and the cost differential there. Just it astounds me that any library is still in business. I know the majority of your patrons are still checking out good old fashioned books, because a lot of us like to still read that one. It still boggles my mind.
It's, yeah, Stephen King seems to be the, the highest I've ever seen as far as costs. So I mean, obviously, people want him, so we have to get those. But yeah, it is, it's crazy.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes the presentations. No ordinances, no resolutions, and we have one agreement. Elijah.
Thank you. So you have before you the construction management agreement for Norfolk Southern to do the runabout line. It has been reviewed by Mike Davis. All comments have been addressed. The only one they didn't take and basically accept was that they have to have Georgia in there, that the Georgia Department of Transportation regulates them because they're headquartered in Georgia. So we reviewed that with Mike, and he is fine for council to sign that. In doing so, we'll, should be able to go to construction next year, assuming that the merger with Union Pacific doesn't delay things. But at least we'll have an agreement moving forward. Any questions?
Long time coming.
Mary.
Right. It is. And I don't have any questions, but I thought it might be was just to speak to the, the line that the fact that the Borough has requested that Norfolk Southern struck the project, want to speak to that and, and the fact that we're giving them the.
Yes, they'll be acting as the general contractor. It will be put out to bid for the relevant parts that they're able to, but because this is their rail line, they are very particular about who handles what. My understanding is the tie-ins, the active rail will be held by their force work, but the construction of the runabout line, when it's isolated, can be done through bidding. So, and we are reviewing that with our grant consultant at the state to make sure, and they are aware that, you know, with Norfolk Southern, there are a few things that they do not kind of waiver on, and this is one of them.
Thank you, Elijah, for speaking to that.
I have a question about, hold on one second. The estimated cost is 2.38 million, and we are responsible for that cost. My understanding is that that cost estimate was provided in late, was good as of late 2024. And that's the cost that's in the agreement. Were you able to discuss with them having any type of ceiling on the cost, since there is no, it's an estimate?
So there isn't necessarily a ceiling, but our grant amount through the state is 50% match up to 1.5 million. So we essentially have a grant that would cover up to a $3 million construction project. And the cash, because of the reimbursement for this, the general obligation bond has sufficient money to cover that. It's entirely until we're reimbursed. If I'm misspeaking, Rob can jump in.
He's exactly right. Yeah, he's good.
Okay. It just concerns me not having any type of a cost ceiling when we're responsible for the total cost. And I didn't know if there was something that could be put into the agreement with respect to that, given how costs are going up so much right now or have been going up over the last, you know, the period of time since that estimated cost was provided. So that gives me a little bit of pause, but I'm excited to get the project going. Just want to make sure that the Borough is protected.
The good thing is, Mary, with material costs, there's limited, I'll say, per se, materials, and it's mostly labor and it's mostly excavation. So good thing with that, those costs are fixed, not all the crazy things that you hear going on with materials. So that gives me a little bit of ease, knowing it shouldn't fluctuate that much. But I guess to your point, estimate was eight, that estimate was, what did you say again?
It was late 2024.
Okay, that's, that.
And I will say that the original estimate we had was for 2.7 million. So it has actually gone down from the original one we had in '21.
The other item was that there was a note that we should confirm the dollar amount of the design costs. Was that reviewed? And are you comfortable with, with that?
Yes. And we're, we're generally done with the design at this point.
Thank you, Elijah.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Elijah and Rob, for all your work on this. I know it's been a long time coming to get to this point.
Any other questions from council?
No other questions. I guess I'll make a motion to approve the runabout construction agreement with Norfolk Southern.
Second.
A motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion approved. Thank you, Mary. Right. Here, moving on to council members forum. Ken, you're first on the docket with water and wastewater.
Hey, thank you, Stephen. Good evening, everyone. We have a full slate of items here under the Water and Wastewater Services. First up is Infomart. Is Doug Zook in attendance?
Yep, he's walking up to the mic here.
He's, he's got a lot of good news to share. So Doug, take it away.
Sure. I'll start off with the water testing for lead and copper for 2025. Testing was completed and was certified by DEP. All residents that participated were under the action level with the exception of one that was over. And then that one was a house built in 1936 that also has some galvanized plumbing and water softener. So we would expect that one to be high. Letters have gone out to the residents. As far as for the wastewater plant for the nutrient credit trading program, we generated 7,495 nitrogen credits for the year and 878 phosphorus credits. The credits were certified on October 19th, and we're currently in the process of the sale of 5,463 nitrogen credits and 37 phosphorus credits totaling $15,539. The buyers are Keystone Protein out of Fredericksburg, Pennsylvania, West Calico Township, Quail Creek Homeowners Association in Mannheim, and Mount Joy Borough Authority. And we still have quite a few left. We have 2,032 nitrogen credits left and 841 phosphorus credits.
Did you say what the, what we got for those? What was the cost for?
They were.
Per, per pound?
Yeah, per pound. I don't actually have that. It was $2 and something. I should have wrote that down. I didn't. But that was established earlier in the year for, for the cost.
Thank you, Doug.
Yeah, sorry about that. I don't know off the top of my head. It was like $2.58 for nitrogen, I believe. Yeah.
We won't quote you on that specifically. I was just curious how they were going. They're still pretty steady.
Yeah, I can send you that then.
Okay. Thank you.
And as far as finances on page three of my report, at the time of my report, we did not have a PPNL statement from, from the month, because they had done a meter change out, and they were delayed in getting us the billing. So my numbers are a little different than what's in your package. So for the month, we were $17,432 under budget. And then that puts us a year to date, under budget $3,735. Capital projects, there's no change from last month. We're still waiting on parts for the NIR check valve repair. Supposedly, they got shipped to the wrong place, and they're working on getting them to us. We were planning on doing that work, along with the diffuser socks first week in November. It looks like that's not going to happen now. And then all of the water plant capital projects are complete. They ended up $16,212 under budget. After hours callouts, we had six at the wastewater plant. We had a power outage. We had a blower fault. And then we had four influent pump station general alarms, which turned out to be a limit switch that was replaced, and that issue's been resolved. That's all I have.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions from council?
No questions here, Ken.
Okay, thank you. I move to approve the September Infomart report for the Lititz Borough Water and Wastewater Facilities.
Second.
A motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you, everybody. The next order of business is the approval of the 2026 Infomart draft sewer budget. The background here is that the Lititz Borough and Warwick Township split the expenses to operate the wastewater treatment plant. The expenses for each municipality are based on flow. So looking ahead here, in 2026, one of the highlights for the wastewater treatment plant's budget is building the solids conveyor at this, at the plant. This conveyor will enable the wastewater treatment plant to continue to process waste, even if the dryer is out of service. All the expenses we reviewed are in line, and it's our responsibility at this time of the year to approve the preliminary sewer budget so that the Warwick Township can move forward with their budgeting process. So we'd like to give this preliminary sewer budget to Warwick Township. Any, any questions from council? Okay, seeing none, I move to approve the 2026 preliminary sewer fund budget for the, for review and incorporation into Warwick Township's 2026 budget.
Second.
Your motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you, everybody. Next item of business is to advertise the wastewater plant conveyor bidding. The background here is that in 2025, the wastewater treatment plant budget plan, we approved to do the work to design and provide permits for the construction of a solids conveyor at the wastewater treatment plant. So this conveyor will again give us redundancy if the dryer process is out of service. So tonight, the Borough Council has the opportunity to authorize NTEC Engineering to begin the administrative work associated with bidding the conveyor project at the wastewater treatment plant. If approved, the bidding process will take place in 2025. Construction is anticipated to occur in 2026. The budgeted cost for the conveyor project is $216,000. Please let me know if you have any questions or need additional information before we vote.
Questions here, Ken?
Okay. I'd like to move that the Lititz Borough Council authorize NTEC Engineering to begin the administrative work associated with bidding the conveyor project at the wastewater treatment plant. The budgeted cost of the project is $216,000.
Second.
A motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
The next item of business is Front Street Water Meter Pit Payment Application Number One. Background here is enclosed in your packets this month is the application for payment number one, which is the final payment from Dolee Construction Corporation, the contractor for the Front Street Water Main and Meter Pit Replacement Project. Dolee has submitted all required payroll certifications. NTEC Engineering has reviewed the payment application and confirmed its accuracy and alignment with the work completed to date. A final inspection was conducted on October 15th by NTEC, Dolee, and Lititz Borough Staff. All previously identified punch list items have been satisfactorily addressed, and the scope of work is now complete. NTEC recommends final payment to Dolee in the amount of $352,545.50. Any questions?
No questions here, Ken.
Thank you. I move to approve final payment in the amount of $352,545.50 to Dolee Construction for the completion of Front Street Meter Pit Replacement.
Second.
A motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay. Next is Front Street Water Meter Pit Change Order Number Three. The change order includes a lump sum of $7,800 due Dolee Construction Corporation to complete a replacement of a 3/4 inch copper water service as directed by Borough Staff. If you remember last month, Dolee used some of our existing materials that we had already purchased to complete part of this water meter pit project, resulting in a credit to the Borough of $25,084.50. Tonight, we'd like to recognize the work that they've done to install the 3/4 inch meter pit, our meter copper service for $7,800, which would result in a credit to the Borough of $17,284.50. Does that make sense to everybody?
Is this, I'm.
This is part of that application.
Right, so this was two additional lines, is that right? Or am I confused?
I think, I think it was two, two service lines.
Okay, and the homeowner portion of those lines was done?
Correct.
By the homeowner?
Correct.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Any other questions?
Nope.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, that Lititz Borough Council approved the change order number three for the Front Street Water Meter Pit Project. Period.
Second.
Do a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay, finally, our last item, manhole number six and seven, payment app number two. NTEC Engineering has reviewed the Vexcon Payment Application Number Two and has found it to be accurate and reflective of the work completed to date. In addition, NTEC, Vexcon and Lititzboro staff conducted a final inspection on October 16th, 2025. All of the previous punch list items have been addressed and their scope of work is complete. NTEC recommends payment to Vexcon in the amount of $45, $44,095.52, which represents final payment for this contract. Any questions? I move to approve final payment application number two in the amount of $44,095.52 to Vexcon for the completion of manhole number six and seven.
I'll second.
Do a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion approved.
Ken, can I just ask real quickly, that, was that the project that was covered by ARPA funding? Is that right?
Yes, it was.
Shaking his head yes. So, okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that that's reflected.
The, this final part is just, uh, just for Mary and I.
That's American Rescue Plan Act. Sorry, just violated my own rule.
So Steve, just finally, uh, this committee has been very active this month, uh, in a wide range of activities here, primarily, uh, looking at our budget for 2026. Uh, we're pleased to report that a lot of the projects are in the final stages of completion or nearly complete. Um, Mary, if you would, if you have any highlights from the MS4 or the Borough Authority meetings that you'd like to share, I'd be grateful.
Um, we don't have anything this month. I'm looking at Scott and Elijah, MS4. Don't think there was anything to report for MS4, nothing that jumps up this time. Um, from the Borough Authority meeting, we did have some discussion about the issue of the missing sewer caps and, um, so gonna be, uh, bringing back to committee some recommendations they had on how to address that in a more efficient way than we had been discussing.
Thank you, Mary.
That's it.
Steve, that concludes our report. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. All right, uh, moving on to Tenea, Streets and Traffic.
Okay, couple items of business. Um, Streets and Traffic would like to recommend council amend chapter 115 of the Vehicle and Traffic, uh, of the Borough Code to amend the following. So there's two different items on the ordinance that was on, laying on your, um, tables this evening. Rob, could you put up that picture for me, please, just to give you guys a visual? Keep talking about west and south and this and that, so I'd just like to be able to see what I'm looking at. There we go, okay. So you can be my little arrow. Um, all right, so the first one is to, we wanted to prohibit parking on the, uh, West Sixth Street on the south side from South Broad Street to Spruce Street. So that would be across from Keller Brothers. Um, leading up, I didn't really even realize this, but there, I mean, that's allowable parking at this point, right?
Well, for that specific one, it's posted as no parking, but it's never been in the code.
Okay, so we have to...
So that, that one on the south side is basically correcting what's been in, out there for however long.
Okay.
Well, and that's actually what most of these here with this intersection relate to is the line striping, um, with the new line striping and the turning.
And then the other, the other parking is on the West, uh, Sixth Street North Side, 200 feet west of the South Broad intersection. So that's on, that's in front of Florrie's. Am I correct, Elijah? On that side? Florrie's Beer Distributor?
It's opposite.
Up, it's the south side.
It's, okay, so that's on the AAA building.
Right.
That parking side. So we're asking for that parking to be prohibited. Right, you can park there if you, if you want. I mean, if you did, I guess.
And again, if you park there, it's allowed. There's no, no parking signs. There's no curb striping. But if you park there, exactly, you're gonna be blocking traffic.
Okay, so that is the first, uh, recommendation. And the second one then would be, we can also look at this picture here too. Um, restricted, restricted parking along the 700 block of the Raspberry Lane. So that's the lane that goes behind Turkey Hill, Dunkin' Donuts and so forth. So typically, currently, there's no parking restrictions on that lane. So both sides, you can park. And, um, so what happens, it's really difficult for the snow removal, the plow to get back there and you'll see this lovely picture. So that's like a typical day in the snow. So that's tough for our Public Works to get back in there and remove snow. So we were suggesting, and the Lititz Fire Company was, was, uh, honed in on this as, as well as the Warwick EMS and also supported this restriction to just do one side of, uh, it would be the...
Still allowing parking on the east side.
Yes, yes.
And that's where you see most people parking.
Right.
A lot of parking on the east side.
And that, that visual was looking south, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, right, yes.
Yeah, you can, you're highlighting the western side would not be.
Right.
And that, that's, that's a very narrow carway as it is already. I know that was intentional when with that quote alley.
Especially for emergency vehicles to get back to. Like I say, it's the back of the house that they need to get to. There really wouldn't be a lot of room for them to get back that.
That, that felt, I remember when that development, that Keller Brother, uh, Keller Drive development occurred, it was intentional, that was to be more the car way of an alley.
There's more traffic now because of Dunkin' Donuts.
Right, coming out.
Coming out.
Road as well.
Or Dunk, Turkey Hill, anything there, you see, that's why, yeah. Yeah, if you're coming out of Dunkin' Donuts, it's, if somebody actually is parked, I think it, it's actually striped on the other side because it's hard to take a left turn out of there.
So that really is just the, the back alley for those homes who also have frontage on Keller Drive.
Correct.
And there is parking out on Keller Drive. Got it.
So there's a third, third issue, um, that we were I think at this point, this is a parking fee rate increase, but I think at this point, we, we could, um, we should table that for until budget time so we can discuss numbers. And actual, I'm just thinking tonight, instead of having to figure that out tonight, I think that might be better if we do around budget time, if that makes sense.
Can we go back to the parking restriction on West Sixth Street North Side? And if you can zoom in there, Rob, and, um, I'm curious what the, you said there's some new striping that's gonna go in or has gone in. I drive that a lot, but honestly, I haven't noticed.
I said today to Elijah.
So I can speak to this one. So the, we had the green light go for the new detection, uh, that was done at that, turning it into radar. And if you've ever gone east or west, the turning lanes were offset. They weren't even. And so it was actually very difficult if you're making, if you were making a left, uh, from West Six to go northbound, or you were making a left to go southbound from East Six, uh, you basically had to wait for a break. Um, now the, the visual is much easier, but as part of that, it took an evaluation of, of the active parking and the striping out there. And, uh, Chief, myself and Scott were out and quickly realized that, uh, if they're not restricted, not saying anyone parks there normally, but if someone were, it would create some, uh, pretty significant traffic restrictions.
Yeah, if you look at, I'm looking at the street view on my computer here. I mean, it's really 75% of that's already striped yellow because it's at, near the intersection. So it's really only, you know, and obviously you can't park in front of that guy's garage there. And it only goes down, I would say, like two spaces to the right of that garage. Thereon, it's already striped yellow and there's a sign, it's no parking from here to corner already. So it's really only increasing it by, I would say, at most two parking spaces to the right of that garage that's running West Six, that's gonna be eliminated. The rest of it, you can't park on anyway, just because it's proximity to the corner.
Okay, yeah, I think my concern was, I thought it was going all the way to Spruce and that would eliminate any parking on that north side. Um, or let's say that corner property right there, they've got guests coming, something like that, but it looks like there's still gonna be room for two or three cars there on West Six.
You can see there, there you park in that garage, in that garage there. They can still park there, but this is what I'm saying, there's no parking from here to corner already. Actually, I only get one car, really only one parking.
Okay. Um, were property owners here notified of us taking this action?
I would this one, no.
Because it already is posted.
For the most, there is, it's mostly posted. It's, it's not that there's a lot of space here. Um, and from my own personal experience, I've never seen anyone park in any of these areas.
Right.
Uh, usually the person with the garage, it's actually like a three-car garage. They park in the driveway there. Occasionally, there'll be someone parking west of there and then the house that's on the corner, um, has a driveway access off as well, and they're usually parking in their driveway.
Okay.
Like I said, you're only, most of that's already curbs yellow, other than just the one space.
Right.
But for the garage, ironically, in this, but there is someone parked west side.
Yeah, I, I knew I remembered, again, I drive that way when I'm going to Wise sometimes or something. Anyway, um, I, I would like to see us reach out to property owners when we're gonna be doing something like this, um, in the future because I remember a time when the decision was made to restrict parking in front of my house and no alert. I just happened to be at a council meeting and we were able to negotiate, I'm in the school district, and we were able to say, just during school hours. Otherwise, I would have completely lost parking.
Well, and staying with protocol was, what, only a year ago, uh, what was it, Lehman, Lehman Street?
Yep.
Went through a process. I think it is, it's good to communicate. I would like, again, that example, I would like to think not as much of an issue, but, um,
Right.
And obviously this, this south side, you can't park on anyway. Most of that yellow, you can't park in anyway. Raspberry Lane people.
How many property owners are we talking about? It's, but...
Well, for West, the East Six is, is pretty minimal. Uh, now Raspberry Lane, uh, there's a lot of property owners on there.
Yeah, you've only got one residential, I think, in a Sixth Street, but you've got some commercial, you gotta inform them too.
Yeah.
But again, I, I think most of that you can't even park on anyway.
Right, okay. Thank you.
So, um, are we in agreement that we can table the parking meter charges to discuss during budget times? Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Um, all right, any other questions? Okay. Um, so I'd like to make a motion to advertise to add section 115 dash 15 to prohibit parking. I'll go through this on...
Let me just pause for a minute. Do we want to wait until we notify residents before we do that?
So this is just for advertisement. So this is putting it out for public comment. So this would be the appropriate time to reach out to them. Um, we could have it at the next meeting, or if you want, you could essentially have it advertised and planned for December.
All right.
As long as we all just keep... This makes it public.
We want to make sure we get the public aware of it. Because, again, much as we would proceed with this, not every one of them know it, get that notification in the mail.
All right, so we're just gonna, I'm just gonna do, uh, ask for a motion to, just to advertise, um, the section 115 dash 15 for the parking, to prohibit parking on West Sixth Street from South Broad to Spruce Street and West Sixth Street North Side, um, 200 feet west of the South Broad Street intersection, as well as the 700 block of Raspberry Lane. To the south, isn't it, was it the west?
Sixth Street as well?
E-six.
E-six, three, south side from South Broad to Keller and East Six North Side to 52 uh, east of South Broad.
Yes, sorry, I had those, didn't have those in there. And then Raspberry Lane.
I'll second.
All right, may I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
All right, got another one on my list, which is the Special Events Ordinance. So this is also just, just looking to advertise these special events ordinance. If you recall, this is the, um, we would be amending chapter 82 of the Borough Code to rename it to Parade and Special Events, um, and which will clarify the special events process and establish a way of recouping Borough staffing costs for special events. So council did receive a copy of the recommended ordinance, um, Chief and Wes spearheaded this, so does anybody have any? It's basically triaging events. Um, example, like the applicant will fill out an application, a small application that gets sent to the public, uh, to the police department from there, then they triage and figure out if they need to have Wes involved and Public Works involved, if council needs to approve it and so forth. So, um, anybody have any questions about that? Hey?
Um, I just have a couple of things. Um, section 82 dash three says that the fee will go into a capital fund. I'm just wondering why the decision was made that the fee would go into a capital fund rather than going into just operating budget cover
Feed to that?
So currently, if somebody does submit a special event application, there's a $25 fee that would accompany the application. Uh, one of the things that we realized over the last year or so with operating during these special events is we've been very intentional about hardening road closures and access control points, especially for the events that are on downtown streets so that we can protect them from vehicle intrusion, whether it be, uh, a vehicle has an improvised weapon or, uh, an impaired driver, medical impaired driver. But one of the things that we realized with that is there is some aging infrastructure as far as, um, what the Borough has in inventory for, you know, the water buffaloes, um, other types of physical barriers. So the intent by this was that application fee rather than just going to the, the general fund, would then be used to reinvest into a capital reserve fund that could at least offset some of the replacement costs for some of the aging infrastructure or new purchases to expand the footprint capabilities of hardening these events if we needed to in the future. So it, it essentially takes the application fee that somebody is putting for their special event and then earmarking that for future improvements to make special events safe.
Thank you.
Sure.
Um, do we ever require insurance for people holding events? Is that part of it?
Okay, I didn't.
Always.
Yeah, okay, I didn't see that in the permit. Um, but maybe that's in the application.
It is.
Okay. Okay, oh, okay, I overlooked that. Okay, thank you. Um,
Now this cleans up a lot of what we're talking about.
And for years.
Right, yeah.
This, this will limit, limit some of the street closures for specific events, is that correct?
Not necessarily limited. I, I think it'll create a, a safer footprint. What it will limit are some of the events that traditionally come before council. So these would be certain special events, now I use that term loosely, um, say it's a private event entirely on somebody's private property that has no Say it's a private event entirely on somebody's private property that has no impact to Borough Services. You know, you don't need officers in overtime, you don't need Public Works to set barricades, you don't need any Borough Services, but the Borough has traditionally taken a, a position to approve it.
Yeah, if you remember, I mean, this is where this all generated, I think there were some coming up where like, why are we approving this? It makes no sense. Chief doesn't have to do anything, there's no services we're doing, why are we approving? We're not closing any streets.
Yeah, the, the intention is to, to bank better, more efficient, effective use of, of department staff time so that we're focusing on those events that truly do have an impact to the, the greater community and not applying the same criteria or mandates on those special, I'm sorry, those smaller events that don't have the same impact.
One more question, and I really appreciate all the work that you all put into this. It's very thorough, just trying to understand a couple of things. Eighty-two dash five deals with emergency medical services and fire protection, and it says that the association and so forth will have the right of first refusal when staffing special events?
So what that's referring to is the Borough designates their fire and EMS providers. Uh, Litts Fire Company, Warwick EMS under the auspices of Wesk.
Right.
What we wanted to be intentional about is if an, an applicant would come in and you obviously need a fire truck, or you obviously need an ambulance to staff this event to ensure that the Borough's designated providers who have been vetted and approved by the Borough are the ones that are being used to staff these events as opposed to somebody saying, well, I have a cousin in a fire company in Lebanon County and they're going to bring a fire truck down. It just ensures that the, the organizations that the Borough has previously vetted are the organizations that are going to be serving the Borough.
It's clear you all have been very thorough in this, so thank you again. I think it's a great move. Great improvement in our processes and good for the community.
Anybody else have any questions? Come on up.
Uh, Todd Dickinson, South Sixth Street. Uh, it's been several years since I've been on, um, the Venture Lititz Board, but I know traditionally they've had a role in reviewing applications and, and, um, working with the chief on um, impacted downtown, communicating with, uh, with members. Is that so I, you know, I'm sure it's not being put into the, into the ordinance, but in terms of the, the plan for implementing changes, um, have they been involved and, and what's their, do you have a, uh, first role for them looking forward?
So if you recall, it was the August council meeting that we presented, the, the PowerPoint, which was the, the conceptual vision of what the process would look like. Uh, a couple of late weeks later, we had that very same conversation, that very same presentation with a wide variety of stakeholders, so Venture Lititz, Merchants Association, the common sponsors to make sure they had a voice in this process to revise the ordinance. So they have seen this, they've had the ability to offer comment back to uh, the emergency services. But yeah, to your point, I mean, obviously even if Venture Lititz per se is not the event sponsor, we recognize they, including residents, often feel the impact of some of these events. So um, you know, one of the conversations that were had previously were to at least make sure that the events that are downtown, there's a, a conversation, if it's between myself or Wesk or somebody else in the Merchants Group, Venture Lititz, to make sure that they know a schedule, if you will, what's going to be happening, when, and just so they can prepare for any impacts that they could see as a result of that. If that answers your question. Yeah, we've received no feedback to the contrary of what we've presented. To your point, everything that we've received back to us has been supportive of it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it needs to go on yours. I think to Todd's point, obviously, your question, we're going to close Main Street, you're probably going to let them know, hey.
Right, I think administratively, it's managing good relationships and communication to make sure that everybody's aware.
Who else? So I'd like to make a motion to advertise the special events ordinance, amending chapter eighty-two to call it uh, parades and special events.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Steve, if I may, I just wanted to, uh, it, it just occurred to me that it's probably worth noting just how timely that this ordinance could be in light of the changes that have been made to the Lititz Springs Park and their ability to host events. So just to keep that in mind, that there could be some changes in the future or some requests in the future for event space, um, not at the, at the Lititz Springs Park anymore. So just to throw that out there.
Absolutely. Include possible more road closures.
There could be more requests for that. I'm not saying I know of any, but, uh, heard to me that that happened. Very timely.
All right, I've got, uh, two more events. So I've got a, um, special event, Litts Fire and Ice Festival. Um, it's going to be running from February thirteenth through February twenty-second of twenty twenty-six from four PM to eight PM throughout the downtown Lititz. It's put on by Venture Lititz. There will be a road closure on February twelfth, which is, well, just closing Juniper Lane in the evening from five PM to ten PM. So it's a ten-day event. If you've ever been, it's, it's a fun thing to come down and walk the ice sculptures, eat some chili, have some ice cream, all that good night. So that is my only, but you're right. Um, this is my only special event. So I'd like to make a motion, well, anybody have any questions? I'm jumping ahead here. No? Okay. Um, let's make a motion to approve the Littitz Fire and Ice Festival event.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
And then I have an activity uh, permits for Christmas in the park. Can't believe, I have to believe we're saying Christmas already. December fifth, it's going to be in the Lititz Springs Park. Uh, but from six thirty to seven thirty, there's expected two thousand people to be, to attend. Do you have any questions on that? All right, like to make a motion for the Christmas in the park on December fifth, uh, activity permit.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Aye.
Right, good.
All right, uh, Ken, coming back over to you, finances.
Yes, sir. We have three items to, to share with everybody tonight. Uh, council, uh, in front of you, you have our financial statement. Please take a look at the general fund, financial status there, noting that the revenues collected are at ninety-four percent of budget and expenses realized are at eighty percent of budget. Expenses, uh, continue to trend below budget. Any questions?
No questions here, Ken.
I move to approve the financial statement and pay all our invoices.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Second item of business is the natural gas contract price. Background here is the Lititz Borough's natural gas contract expired August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. We are currently, uh, working with Environ Energy LLC. They're the energy broker for the Lititz Borough. They have gathered five supplier quotes for natural gas. Look, um, these quotes are over a twelve-month and a twenty-four-month period. Based on the pricing received, Environ Energy recommends the twelve-month term with NRG. This represents a thirty-three percent increase over our current rate and this new service will begin December first, twenty twenty-five. This rate increase is not in the twenty twenty-six budget, but will be added once council approves the new rate. Any questions?
Not a question, just a recognition of the pretty drastic escalation in the price of natural gas. And, um, you know, I appreciated the, in the memo, the, um, reference explanation of the, um, fact that natural gas exports are driving up costs. Uncertainty in the data center demand, lack of data from the federal government, uh, energy speculation markets. Think that it's an unfortunate situation and it's clearly, clearly going to have impacts beyond us to other people who are relying on natural gas to heat homes and so forth. So yeah, appreciated that context in the quote.
Yeah, there's a lot of, uh, risk out there, Mary, and it's, even though it's higher than where we are today, it's probably better to, uh, have a contract and play the market.
Yes, agreed.
Okay, thank you for your feedback. Uh, I move to approve the NRG natural gas rate for a twelve-month term, beginning in December first, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. One final, one final, uh, two final items, really. Uh, we just want to recognize the Lititz Moravian Congregation. They're very generous this past month with a nice donation to the Lititz Borough, and we want to thank them for their generosity. Steve, before we turn it back over to you, just want to make, uh, just a few announcements. Uh, the twenty twenty-six budget, uh, season is upon us and would like to let everybody be aware that there's a budget workshop planned for November twelfth at five thirty PM where we'll present the, uh, twenty twenty-six budget. On November twenty-fifth, we hope to approve the budget for public comment at, at the, uh, council meeting. And then we'll have on December ninth, a public budget Q and A session in council, uh, chambers at seven PM and encourage everyone to attend. That wraps it up for, for finance, Steve. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Gary, Personnel and Benefits, you got anything?
No, no report.
Chris, Planning?
Nothing to report.
Mary, Zoning and Code?
I will take the time. Um, tonight I want to announce that, uh, the Borough had its first Warwick area appeals board meeting. Tanaya, thank you very much for, um, intending that. Caught us a little bit off, uh, off guard because, um, this is the first time after this appeals board had been established in two thousand four um, as a regional board to hear appeals, um, for the, um, Uniform Construction Code. So, um, we did have a, an appeal. It was the first one in the Borough, the fourth one, I believe, in the region in all of those years. Um, really indicating the great job that our, um, zoning and code official does in working with our, um, uh, community, um, on their, their, uh, compliance with codes. This one, um, was related to twenty twenty-one code update that had just that day been approved by the state but was not going into, um, was not being enacted for two weeks. There was uncertainty about that. I don't know, Elijah, if we have an update on whether that happened or not. I guess it hasn't been two weeks yet, so we will know. But um, just want to thank the people who serve on that board for being willing to step up kind of, um, periodically to do this and, and, uh, recognize that and thank Tanaya for being able to attend that meeting. We have one agenda item tonight that I'm going to present, uh, for council approval. We would like to advertise a text amendment to the RA zoning district. The amendments are, um, fairly simple. We're doing a, a couple of things to, um, further our work towards um, improving housing conditions in the community. So, um, we are looking at adding accessory apartments. Sometimes we refer to those as ADUs or accessory accessory dwelling units, which we already approved by conditional use. Or allow
special exception.
Special exception. Thank you, Elijah. It's right here in front of me. Um, but we would be, we would, um, allow accessory apartments in all districts by right. Um, they'll still have to meet all of the requirements, but, um, accessory apartments would be allowed in all districts. We've got quite a bit of history now with accessory dwelling units and we think that, um, and this, this comes as a recommendation from the planning commission. So I want to thank the planning commission for their months and months of work on this. But the, um, we've had a, how many years have we been doing accessory apartments?
I think the, open to everyone, I think it's at least been four.
Right, and we have, we have
No, actually, it's been six. The short-term rental was four.
Okay. Um, so that's one, um, provision, um, that is in this text amendment. Let's see, the other main thing is that, um, we are limiting single-family detached dwelling units in the RA district. We're recommending that those be restricted to a maximum lot size, size of point two-five acres and that they should comprise no more than twenty percent of the units, um, on the property of the subdivision land development plans. Another component is, um, addressing the, the building bulk when you might have a multi-family dwelling unit, think apartment building next to existing homes so that you have a step back, um, where the mass of that building would not be right up against existing buildings, um, existing homes, maybe one or two-story homes, three-story apartment building, let's say, would need to be back across, uh, more than a hundred. So you would step those back. So these are all, um, conditions that have been discussed ad nauseam by the planning commission. We have, um, Todd here tonight. Thank you for your work and the rest of the committee's work on there. Also, just a couple of items in there that are cleaning up. I don't know if you want to hide, highlight anything.
One of the things is the, uh, eliminates some of the confusion about the setbacks, um, with the different, uh, zoning districts. Uh, we have the Form-based code. We also had some, um, carryover text from previous ones. We're trying to streamline that and simplify that, which is stating that if it is a new development, it has to follow the Form-based code. If it's an existing development, it follows whatever the, uh, subdivision land development plan is that's recorded for that. And if it's some of the really old places, uh, like where Todd lives and I've talked to him about it, uh, you're actually using the average of the setbacks of the homes in that neighborhood to calculate that. Um, and we're hopeful that that way, if you are in a historic part, you're not having to come before zoning hearing to try to establish the setbacks that have been there for a hundred-plus years. There are, I'm going to look over yours, because there's a couple other uh, housekeeping ones, I think, towards the end of, uh, specifically having these accessory dwelling units, um, paying, uh, water and sewer tapping fees, establishing that in code and making it so that water and sewer tapping fees have to be paid before any kind of occupancy permit is issued. Uh, other than that, it's basically a lot of other housekeeping items. Oh, yeah, the animal shelters. This is one of those ones that our zoning ordinance has, uh, provisions for animals and animal shelters. And everyone looking at that is thinking ASPCA. That is not what the text says and that is not the intent. Uh, animal shelters are horse stables and dog houses. So we're cleaning up the verbiage so that that misconception isn't there, uh, and just making that clear.
Any questions? Council, Todd, do you want to speak to anything? No. Okay. So if there are no questions, I would move to, that we advertise the text amendment to the RA, uh, district.
Your motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion approved. Right? Anything else, Mary?
That's it.
Ken, Building and Grounds?
Thank you, Steve. Um, I would like to defer to Elijah or Rob if they have anything to share under this category. Thank you.
Uh, there was not a Parks Committee meeting this month. Uh, they're waiting for their requests to be considered as part of the budget. I will say, though, that, uh, we did receive an account of graffiti at the skate park and literally before Public Works could even react to it, the local skaters were already posting on social media about how it was unacceptable and going out and cleaning it up themselves. So I'd like to thank them for their initiative of that.
Do you want to say anything about the pesticide, uh, use in, on parks?
We have We have one resident who has been concerned about, essentially, it's an herbicide. I think with pesticide, people think insecticides, which are not part of our application. That is something that we met with Tomlinson Bonberger to discuss those concerns and try to clarify. All of the chemicals that are applied are the lowest risk on the evaluation for the chemical severity, and we are looking at various natural fertilizers that could also be used. So that's something that can be considered with the budgeting for next year.
All right. Nothing more, Ken?
That's it. Thank you.
Mary, Regional Plan?
Yeah, thank you. We met with our regional partners last week, and we are moving forward with our plans to pull employers together to have conversations about housing needs of their employees and begin developing some strategies with them, bring other partners to the table that can help us move forward with our goals as outlined in the Strengthening Community 2030. All three municipalities are moving forward with amendments to our official maps, and you'll be seeing that in the coming months. And then the final thing that I will report on is that there is a joint meeting workshop with our regional partners on Thursday, October 30th, at 7:00 PM at the Warwick Township Municipal Building. There are two agenda items, both listed under the Warwick School District as one of our regional partners. Those are the sharing and discussion of census and demographics for the school district, and also the discussion of the school district's request for a school resource officer. Other items may come up in discussion. This is a workshop-type setting, so public comment will be provided for at the end of the meeting, but this is an opportunity for us to get together and have dialogue with our regional partners. So I hope you're all there. And the public is welcome to attend. I'm Regional Plan? Okay, I think that's it.
Right. Thank you, Mary. That concludes the Council Members' Forum. You all have the report from the Borough Engineer. Scott is here. Do you guys have any questions for him? Anything you want to add, Scott? Questions for council? All right. Moving on to, let's do the chief first, and we'll come back, Mayor. You have anything?
Just briefly, just wanted to mention or highlight a couple of items from this past month since we met at the last council meeting. Our officers over the last month participated in six organized community events, trunk retreats, fall festivals, parades, et cetera. So on top of the routine daily operations, I just think it's important to continually to highlight that the officers are managing and working through the routine operations, but also being intentional and strategic about how they are present and interact with the community through social settings. So I wanted to bring that forward. The other thing that I think would be of interest is because we, as a police department, maintain criminal history record information, so the stuff that is the result of people reporting crimes or other investigations, by law, were defined as a repository of the information. So there's legal mandates as far as how people can access that information, how we're required to store it, how we're required to safeguard it. It's a pretty complex law, and included in that law is once every three years, every repository needs to undergo an audit by the Attorney General's Office. So that audit happened this year. The special agent took a look at policies, procedures, misuse, protocols, handling requirements, and the like of everything that could go into maintaining that legally privileged and sensitive information. So I'm happy to report, no findings. The report, the audit went great. There's no issues, no concerns. So I felt it was important to bring that forward.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Not a surprise.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, Mayor, I believe this month you were going to talk about Freeport.
Yeah, as I said the last meeting, Freeport reached out to me, and the reason they reached out to me was they are called Pretzel City, USA. And one of the PR people out there from Freeport was in a antique shop and saw a trivet, a pretzel trivet, and on the back was Lititz, home of the world, home of America's first pretzel bakery. And so he reached out to me. And so I went out, when was that? In September, and just checked out what Freeport was all about. And I'm also interested, and most of you know that I'm involved with Julia Sturgis Pretzel Bakery, and if we, you know, it just makes sense. So with, since we are the first pretzel bakery in America, first commercial pretzel bakery in America. So anyways, I went around and took some pictures, and I'm just going to show you that. What I would like to do is, the first one was a mural from, that had Freeport, Illinois, and Pretzel City, USA. That's what they're known as. Okay, next. Different ones in the center, in the circle, is a square, you know, a memorial in the square. When I was walking the streets, I saw the Pretzel City Barber Shop. On the top there is their tallest building. They are 23,000 people in the town, in the city of Freeport. They're located about 20 miles south of Wisconsin in the northwest corner. To the right on the top there is their library, which is a Frank Lloyd Wright-inspired building. Down right below that is an old theater that still has the lights that go around and an old-time theater. And really cool. And to the left, there was a sculpture in there that I think that didn't come out very well. Next. And that's this Pretzel City, USA. This is where their first, the second building that their Pretzel Bakery was in the 1800s, and they were, they had a lot of beer brewers, and they were vying with Milwaukee to get the the big beer companies in, but unfortunately, they didn't have enough water, so all the big beer companies went to Milwaukee. Okay, and so anyways, this was a building that they were in, and now it's an office building. And you can't see it now, but I think it's Bradenbach or something like that, that is the name of the company. Next. Right next to the library, they have a very nice park, and it's called, I think, Bait Park or something, and they had, back in the day, the Second Lincoln-Douglas Debate there. And at that time, I guess Lincoln started to get the best of Douglas without getting into the history. Next, that's just the river that goes through town with an old iron bridge. Next. They love the Cubs there, and it's a replica of Wrigley Field. And it's called Little Cubs Field, and the ivy around the top, it is made to scale, and the ivy around there, the outfield wall is from seedlings that came from Wrigley Field. Next. That's their high school, and if you can see on the right, Freeport, and then you see the pretzel in their high school. Next. And there's another, I was in the high school, the guy that took me around was a part-time teacher there, and you can see they liked their pretzels. Once a pretzel, always a pretzel, and there's the pretzels going in there. Next. And Center Court on the basketball court, and then you can see how they have the pretzel on their bleachers there. And then on the top, proud to be a pretzel on the sign at the top. And I did take a picture of the football field. They have a big pretzel in the middle of their football field, but that picture did not come out. Next. And this is just a beer fest that they had the Saturday that I left. Next. I think that's it.
What was that motto you told me? What was the motto, motto that you
Oh, you can, yeah, when I asked them what some of the cheers would be, well, they said, I have a T-shirt that they gave me, you can eat me, but you can't beat me. You can eat us, but you can't beat us.
Right, that's what it was, yeah.
Did you tell them that Lititz?
It's, I think, it's, it's nothing that just to be a sister city, we just, I think it'd be a nice PR thing, and also I think that they are trying to upgrade their city and get more community support, and maybe they could learn something from us and our the way that we do our town. So they would send some people out later on on their own, and, you know, basically, we just do it. I think Elijah looked at it. We just need a, you know, a simple resolution or a proclamation by me, and it doesn't mean a whole lot. It just is a public relations thing.
Yeah, the last time we did it with the city in the Czech Republic, it was done just by proclamation, and we don't have that floating around that I've been able to find. So I probably would say do it as a resolution, and we can, you know, but literally, if the mayor wanted to, technically, you could just issue a proclamation.
I remember when we did that one.
I'll decide what we're going to do there, and I would like to present it. We're going to have a full meeting in November, so probably in December.
I was just looking
Hey, Tim.
Yes.
Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah.
Did you tell them Lititz, where history gets twisted in the tastiest way?
No, I did not.
And how did their pretzels compare?
Actually, this is the strange thing. They don't have a pretzel bakery in town.
They're putting us to shame.
So I was, I'm, basically, my contacts, I'm trying to think of some way, and if they have a distributor out there where we can get some pretzels out to them.
There you go.
And get their own label on it.
Tell them to bring extra bags when they come to visit.
So that's it, that's it. Thank you very much. Oh, one other thing I did, I did want to mention. Tania, Mary, Elijah, and Rob, and myself, and Jerry, were at the Boroughs Association Meeting that was hosted here at Collusion, and we were all part of it, and it was very interesting, and that's all I have to say about that.
Yeah, I heard a lot of comments from people about how they didn't know we had that venue there and how much they loved it, and people are going to come back. So we were upstairs in the shirt factory portion of the building, and it was a lot of fun. It was one of the best Borough Association dinners ever.
Back on the Freeport thing, I was just looking for everybody's sake. It's, it's like it's about two hours west of Chicago.
Yes.
All right, nothing more, Chief or Mayor. Moving on to Elijah and Rob's report. Start with Elijah.
So we covered a lot of the things I've been working on as action items. The one thing I do want to provide an update for is we did receive the solicitors' comments on the redistricting ordinance this morning. In general, it's in a very good state, and I've, Marion Tania, I've been the point people on this. I think we're going to look at moving that forward under the next council in January, so.
Anybody, any other questions for Elijah? Rob, anything you want to add to your report?
Just with the HVAC work here for Borough Hall, it's going well. Substantial completion should be by November the 12th. We just had some duck work and some other small things to do moving forward. December 3rd is still a good date for our website launch. And just some admin things, as most people have spoken during the meeting, most of our projects and capital purchases are complete for this year. And we're doing end-of-year reviews of schedules. We've gone over some end-of-year finances with staff, things like that, and that's really it.
Rob?
No question for Rob, but I have a question on our environmental coordinators.
Go ahead, Elijah.
There was a mention of the sidewalk replacement, and I did notice a lot of sidewalk markings on South Cedar Street. Just wondering if you can update us on what's happening with that. Are homeowners being not notified? Are we taking care of that? How, what's happening?
It is the homeowner's responsibility. They have been notified. Those letters went out about two weeks ago. I know we've had one person requesting kind of a reevaluation. Public Works goes out and looks at it. Jordan's out there as well, and they go by just objective standards with the amount of cracking, lifting, essentially if it's cracked or lifted, it's flagged for replacement. And they also look at the amount of aggregate coming through with the idea that sidewalks are only evaluated in this way when paving is done, which is generally every 20 years. So wanting to head off things that are needing to be replaced in that. If there's a little bit of aggregates showing, or if there's no issue, then it's not flagged for replacement. There's also, if you go and look, you'll see a straight line across some edges, and those are ones where they're being suggested to be ground down so that it doesn't create a tripping hazard without necessarily replacing the entire thing. So as of, as of right now, I've only had one kind of negative feedback of that. I don't know if, Rob, if you've had any other beyond that one?
Maybe a handful, but I think it's more questions or asking for clarity on exactly what
The challenge with this in the past is usually getting them to get it done before the paving project.
Yeah, I did notice a lot on South Cedar Street, and some are in very bad shape, and they're dangerous. So I appreciate the diligence. I want to acknowledge that it is another big expense for homeowners. So if people have questions, hopefully, they can reach out to either of you and get some clarification on timing and all of that, so.
Just for all of council and somebody that might not have been here, and this was something, tell me how, Elijah, like, how many years ago? It used to be the curb was on, and that was like impossible, and that, you know, held us hostage to getting it done if they didn't get it done. So we pay for the curb, they pay for the sidewalk.
Yeah, prior to the stormwater fee being implemented in 2020, the sidewalk repair and the curb replacement were the homeowner's responsibility, and it had to be done prior to the paving. So was that, they were actually informed up to two years in advance. If they weren't able to, then the borough would basically bid the project out in order to have it done prior to paving.
I think the lesson learned was, I think, maybe when we were doing Orange Street or something years ago, it was like impossible to get all of it done before the paving is done.
I'd like to take an opportunity to interject at this point, because this, the subject of sidewalk condition has come up in other meetings that I've been involved in recently, and Elijah mentioned that sidewalks are evaluated by borough personnel as part of the system when the roads are repaved. However, the borough will respond to concerns or complaints from residents, so if there is a hazardous sidewalk out there that someone is aware of, they are encouraged highly to reach out to the borough, and the borough will evaluate it at that point and take, take whatever action.
Correct.
Can you just walk me through just after that? Okay, so we, we get a complaint, and we send letters, first initial. How long do we give them? Do we follow up with the second letter, or what's like
For the complaints or for the standard, like we're
No, just like something, somebody's, you know, sees a, you know, a couple-inch lip, and it's hazardous on their neighbors or whatever, so they call and complain. What do we do after we send letters, putting them on notice? Like, how far do we?
So I'm not sure what Jordan has in the current letter. The former one was two years, to essentially give people an appropriate amount of time. If you look at our sidewalk ordinance for a complaint one, the replacement is actually like five days to 10 days, which isn't feasible necessarily. So in that two-year period, it's generally, there'll be follow-ups and saying, now, Rob, are you from, has it been shortened, or is it still two years?
It's still two years. So the next set of letters is going out is for East Second Avenue. It's page 22. Andy walked those to see who hasn't done the repairs. So those letters be going out, and they'll get another, another year to make So those letters be going out and they'll get another, another year to make those repairs or replacements.
But it.
If it's a complaint one, that's when Lori would send a letter and we, we just follow up with letters from there on out because it's, it's still the homeowner's.
It's still, right.
We're just letting them know.
Right, okay. I, I would assume most homeowners know that the sidewalks are there?
No.
I don't know. I mean, I still get questioned with that.
Yeah.
That might be something maybe down the road to send a letter out, maybe with our.
Guidelines.
Even just a notice to the homeowners that sidewalks are their issues. Right, I mean, because yeah, in the lib, you know, and if somebody falls and hurts themselves, it costs them more in the end than it is just to replace it, but.
Yeah, but it's also to let you, I mean, hide your front.
That, it can be, but it can be more costly to have to respond to an accident. So and I think what Tanea might be suggesting is that we proactively include a friendly reminder to all residents in one of our water sewer bill, um, something like that on a, on the.
Well, I think also what I heard. Wayne.
Yeah, I. Yeah, I think, I think definitely some of the details behind that would make sense. We can throw that in the flyer.
Thoughts? We're, we're also working in Water and Sewer Committee as we've reported on ownership over water sewer lines where the responsibility um, transfers from the borough to the homeowner. So perhaps we do something a little bit more um, extensive covering a variety of topics.
Right.
Around that, rather than multiple letters or communication.
Makes sense. Do it all in one.
Okay. All right. Um, also from Rob, Elijah for Rob or Elijah. All right, moving on to the final thing, uh, public comment. Anybody have any comments, questions, concerns regarding any topics not covered today? Online, Rob?
Nothing online.
Okay. Not?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for coming tonight.